Counselor Baker. Counselor Seomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. Counselor Zachem. We have everyone in attendance, Mr. President.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise as I introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Our clergy for today is someone who works right in the heart of our city. He's the executive director of Art Street. And he's been very active in the city of Boston. Art Street now is in my district. And Father Tom Conway has done a lot of work. And he's going to just give you an idea of what they do at Art Street before he states a prayer and does our invocation. So without further ado, Father Thomas Conway. Thank you, Father.
Thank you. Art Street does a number of social service projects you may or may not be aware of. We have grocery giveaway every week for 500 families. We're starting a program, food giveaway of new clothing partnering with Dignity You Wear, which is a nonprofit based in Jacksonville, Florida, of all places. But they recently delivered 4,800 pieces of clothing at Art Street. We're partnering with St. Francis House on that. We're trying to do more and more with St. Francis House in partnership. I'm on the board now at St. Francis House. We have a number of 12-step programs. A lot of people, if you ask people where they got started on 12 steps in Boston, they'll say, oh, I got started at Art Street. And then the last thing I just wanted to let you know about was that we have a lot of space in our building. It's a 12-story building. We have a lot of space. We have more than one 501(c)(3). We're geared up to do programs of various kinds, religious or secular. So anything that helps the city of Boston, if you are looking for a downtown space to house a program, we're happy to do something like that. It doesn't have to be Catholic. It doesn't have to be religious. However, we can help the city of Boston on those things. And as I say, we're geared up with more than one kind of 501(c)(3), so we can handle different kinds of things. So I'm very grateful to be here. And any way that Art Street can help the people of Boston, we're thrilled to do it for you. So we take a moment of prayer. Through the intercession of St. Francis of Assisi, we pray a blessing on this meeting, on your good work on behalf of the people of Boston. We pray that everyone in this meeting speak with wisdom and strength and courage. We pray that all of us act with the interests of the common good and the least among us. We pray all of this to the God who lives and loves and moves among us. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father, for that presentation and also for that prayer. Before I move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to, in prayer, that a dear friend of all of ours, Eddie Kelly, who's the head of the State Firefighters Association, his four-year-old son is in the hospital and struggling with a serious illness. So that we all keep that in mind and in our prayers as we move on this week. And with that, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. At this time, I would like to introduce as part of a presentation Bob Allison. Bob Allison is the Chair of History. Come on, Bob. He's the Chair of History at Suffolk University across the street. He's been with Suffolk University since 1992. He's been very active in the history of our great city. And today, he's here to talk about a campaign and a movement about the celebration of our 250th birthday of the United States and the significant dates leading up to that time period of the American Revolution. And so Bob is also the head of the South Boston Historical Society and a friend and a constituent. So without further ado, I give you Robert J. Allison, the Chair of History Department at Suffolk University. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors. Good afternoon. Philadelphia already has a committee in place to prepare for 2026. And Philadelphia is building a museum on the American Revolution. And among the things you'll find in the Philadelphia Museum will be a recreation of the Liberty Tree, which was in Boston, and also a tribute to Phyllis Wheatley, a Boston poet. And Boston is falling behind in this because we know that the story of the Revolution, the story of American independence, begins here, in Boston. And it was because of the particular nature of Boston politics, Boston's political culture, that it began here and would not have begun anywhere else. They had a big meeting in Philadelphia, I understand, in 1776, but everything had already happened. Don Adams had said that the Revolution was accomplished before a drop of blood was shed at Lexington Green, and that was a Revolution that took place here. The child independence, he said, was born at the old State House, and over the next 15 years, that child grew to manhood. He probably would have said personhood today. This is a story Boston can tell, and over the next 12 years, we have an opportunity to tell it over the 250th anniversaries of these events. From the Liberty Tree in Chinatown to the downtown sites we all go by every day, to places like Fort Hill in Roxbury, Chelsea Creek in Orient Heights, Bunker Hill, and of course Dorchester Heights in Castle Island, we really have an opportunity to showcase these events, these places, and to engage our people, our students, with this story so that every child in Boston can go anywhere else in the world and tell the story of the massacre, the story of the Tea Party, or the story of Evacuation Day, or the story of the Massachusetts Constitution. Some of us may remember the bicentennial, which was a number of years ago. I won't tell you the number. I'll let you figure it out. And this really was an economic driver for Boston in what was a miserable decade for the city. Boston emerged stronger partly because of the bicentennial commemorations, and we have a similar opportunity now. The Park Service did a study showing that over 3 million people come to Boston every year to visit the historical sites and attractions. And those 3 million people contribute over $160 million every year to the city's economy. And actually, there are about 2,200 jobs hinging upon those 3 million visitors. And every dollar invested in these sites goes to $10 spent by visitors to the city. I'm not asking the council for money at this point. But we have an opportunity to build on this, making Boston a focal point for these civic celebrations, connecting our students, our people, with this bigger story that Boston can tell better than any other place. And to this end, a consortium of various historical sites has come together to think about ways we can engage with one another in telling this story, in bringing it to the attention of the broader public, working together. We have the Bostonian Society, the Freedom Trail, the Mass Historical Society. In fact, I have a fact sheet that's been distributed to you, telling you some of the partners in this venture. And I'm here today to introduce this to the City Council and to say we welcome any support, any partnerships with the city of Boston in this venture that will be to the benefit of all, not only today, but over the next century. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Bob. Bob's a very smart man. He knows that if you're going to start something in the city, you start it here in the Boston City Council. So thanks again, Bob. I'd also like to recognize John Allison is an aide in my office, and that's Bob's son right here. You know John. Yep. So thank you, Bob, and thank you for your continuing efforts to connect the importance of our history because everything that happens here today and moving forward is on the backs of all of those who've done it before us. And so, and recognize that we connect, and I look forward to personally celebrating all the way up to those 12 years and celebrating the 250th anniversary of our country. I'd also add that we have a couple other dates moving forward, just since we're on it, that the city of Boston as a city will be celebrating its 200th anniversary. No, the city Boston as a city will celebrate 200 years in 23, is it? 23, in 2023. And then, of course, in 2030, we'll be celebrating the 400th anniversary of the town of Boston and the incorporation of our city. So we have a lot in front of us. And again, I will be here with all of you as we move forward, not here in the council maybe, but in our city because these are very important benchmarks for all of us. So thank you with that. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing, no objections to the minutes, they are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1018, message to its borough ordinance filed on June 4, 2014. Docket number 0959, and submit a new ordinance, message and ordinance amending CBC 5-5.2 residency and voting requirements for certain offices filed in the office of the city clerk on June 9, 2014.
Docket 1018 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Reports of public offices and others, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1019, the constable bonds of Meek Brown, Anthony T. Keller, Guy Burrburn, Ron Cobb, Thomas C. Hughes, and Byron Cleon have been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received and approved.
Docket 1019 will be approved under usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1019 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 1020, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of May 21, 2014.
Docket 1020 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0675, order for hearing regarding establishing a literary cultural district in Boston.
The Chair recognizes the Committee on Arts and Culture, Counselor Wu.
Here, a great working session on this on Monday afternoon with the lead coalition members and some interested parties. We're now at the stage where the city needs to, the executive partners need to finalize the exact list of assets. They're comfortable with the map right now. And then, as part of the process, before applying to the Mass Cultural Council, they would need a resolution from the city council in support of the district. So it's an incredible list. I think there are 80 assets right now that they have to whittle down in the next couple of weeks. Everything from publishing houses to homes where famous authors and critics and poets lived, to other sites that are in the Copley, Back Bay, downtown, and Beacon Hill area. So I will defer to the lead sponsor of this, Counselor Presley, but I think there may be some action on this soon, but we're just waiting for a few final steps before any city council resolution would be proposed.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Chair, for your partnership and for the hard work of the committee in advancing this. As you may recall, this council, thanks to your support in the past, the first cultural district to be designated was in the Finway. There are many other working groups that are percolating throughout the city, and we hope in that this is a rolling admission, that we will see more cultural districts designated and coming online for the purposes of promoting arts and culture and innovation, but also for increasing revenue. That ultimately is what this is about. It's not just bragging rights and boasting our many arts and cultural assets, but it also is about incentivizing foot traffic into neighborhoods, inspiring economic growth and development, and demonstrating that arts and culture is broadly defined and not narrowly limited to our theater district, but also exists throughout our neighborhoods. I did also just want to underscore that, provided the council does approve this, that this will be the first literary arts district designated in the country. So it's yet another opportunity for us to make history and to lead as a city. Again, I thank Counselor Wu for our partnership, and we look forward to bringing it before the council in short time.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Docket 0675 will remain in the Committee on Arts and Culture. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0742.
Docket 0742, message and order approving appropriation of $1,100,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund for the maintenance and improvement of the Boston Common and Parks.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Seomo, Chair of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing yesterday in advance of the departmental budget hearing for the Parks Department. 0742 is an appropriation from the Parkman Trust Fund for maintenance and improvements of the Boston Common and other designated parks. We are drawing $1.1 million from the Parkman Fund to supplement the Parks Department budget at the specific Parkman-supported parks, such as the Boston Common, the Public Garden, the Fens, Highland Park, Horatio Harris Park, and Malcolm X Park. At the Parkman hearing on Tuesday, we heard from the interim commissioner, Chris Cook, Finance Director Dennis Roach, as well as Director of Maintenance Bernie Lynch, and Chief Swett and other Park Department personnel. The $1.1 million figure is based on a 5% draw on that trust fund on an annual basis, and it remains a balance of $16 million. So I recommend that we pass this order.
Thank you, Counselor Seomo. Counselor Seomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0742. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0742 has passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket 0922, message and order authorized on the city of Boston to accept and extend a grant in an amount not to exceed $200,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, in accordance with the terms of the OUR Common Backyard Grant Program.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Docket number 0922 was heard yesterday, June 10. The Parks would accept these funds to reconstruct Erie Ellington Playground in Dorchester, build and renovate a playground, possibly with the addition of a spray park. This would allow $200,000 from the state to be matched, up to $500,000 from the city of Boston. Obviously, it's great for the family and the kids in this area. I submit this report and recommend that docket 0922 ought to pass.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0922. All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0922 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you please record that Counselor Baker present?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Docket number 0716, ordinance regarding gender identity nondiscrimination in healthcare coverage for city of Boston employees.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty on docket 0716.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held an informative hearing yesterday. I was joined by several colleagues here, along with Vivian Leonard, city of Boston's Director of HR, who announced that the city's recent agreement with the unions to provide healthcare coverage for gender-related treatments takes effect July 1. We also heard from advocacy groups and also from parents in personal stories about the success of the gender-related treatment. So this ordinance seeks to prohibit the city of Boston from contracting with health insurance providers that discriminate or deny benefits on the basis of gender identity, moving at this time for passage, but would defer at this point to the lead sponsors, both of our colleagues, Counselor Michelle Wu and Counselor Ayanna Presley, for their thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Wu.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to Counselor Presley for her partnership on this, along with all the advocacy groups that were involved, and to Chairman Flaherty for running a great hearing yesterday. It was incredibly moving to hear from everybody, both on the impact that this ordinance would have directly on city employees and family members, but also the precedent, the example that it would set for hopefully cities and towns across the Commonwealth, as well as private employers in addition. So this is a matter of equity and of fairness, but it's also the best economic policy, that we want to be a workplace in the city of Boston that's committed to hiring and keeping the best and brightest, taking away all the barriers for them to supporting their families while they're working here. We heard at the hearing, and it's noted in the committee report, that this would comment minimal cost for the city, that it's been shown to have been minimal cost for other cities that have adopted it, and Vivian Leonard, as well as her staff, testified that Boston has already made some predictions and doesn't anticipate any increases there. We heard from city employees as well on how personal a matter this is for their families. And it's also, I want to just note that this is Pride Week, and so many of us were involved in cranking up the flag with advocates and with the administration earlier in the week. So it'd be a great statement that this week we are celebrating everything about inclusion and that Boston is truly committed to being an inclusive workplace. So would ask for all of your support, and would like the chairman to call for a roll call vote later on.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank the Chair, Counselor Flaherty, for expediting the hearing and for facilitating a well-run hearing. And it was really underscored there once again that it is never statistics that move the needle and advance policy or uplift and better us. Ultimately, the impetus for moving any dialogue or any policies forward is from stories, not just statistics. As policymakers, any opportunity that we can have to bring people into this well, to remind us that for every policy that we conceptualize or move to advance on, we're talking about the impact on the lives of people. So I want to thank Counselor Wu for her partnership in this endeavor. As I said yesterday, nothing meaningful or systemic happens alone or quickly. And so I do want to commend and thank Mass Equality, the Elevate Boston Coalition, the Transgender Law Center, and so many others who have been on the front lines of this fight for a very long time to arrive at this very moment. The Transgender Law Center had distributed a report, and the title of the report is "The Cost of Equality." So for those whom might wonder, what are the cost deferentials here? We would be the first city in the Commonwealth, but not the first city in the country to have truly inclusive health insurance policies. And those cost deferentials are less than a dollar. So that's the cost of equality. So in the name of being fully inclusive and not being a hypocrite, we say we're a world-class city. We can't be a world-class city if anyone is made to feel like a second-class citizen. So in the name of being fully inclusive, of equity, of fairness, and dignity, it is time that this happen. And I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge our mayor and thank him for his leadership and his early commitment to get us right to this very moment. And I urge all of my colleagues to vote in support. And again, I thank Counselor Wu for her leadership and partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for an expedited hearing on this. I want to thank Counselor Wu and Counselor Presley for their leadership on this. We are simply doing the right thing here. And as Counselor Presley noted, behind every policy, behind every line item, is a person. And we need to continue to push forward. Yes, we have marriage equality, but there are many things that we need to take care of, in particular with our transgender brothers and sisters. So I think it's absolutely significant that this city on the hill continue to lead and do the right thing by all, that we open the doors of opportunity and also equity to all. And again, I thank you for your hard work on this, and I thank you for moving swiftly on this issue. Anytime we find a place where equity does not exist, it's absolutely important that we move forward with urgency to make sure that we correct that. Our body has done that time and time again, and you are a reflection of that urgency that we've seen. Thank you so much, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative. And also thank you again, Counselor Flaherty, for doing such a good job with all of the great ideas that come here to be able to expedite hearings such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to rise and echo many of the sentiments already expressed today, Counselors Wu and Presley, thank you for bringing this important matter to the council. And I was privileged to attend the hearing chaired by Counselor Flaherty just the other day. And here are some of the really impactful stories. As Counselor Presley said earlier, everything we do here has a human impact. It can be positive, it can be negative. This is one of the instances where I really think we will see very quickly the positive human impact that an affirmative vote on this matter will take. I certainly will be voting in the affirmative, and I urge all my colleagues to do so as well. This is a matter of equity. The timing couldn't be better. We're in the middle of Pride Week, and like so, I think all of us were out there raising the flag just at the end of last week. I think it's so important that the council and the city of Boston continues to lead the way on equality issues, on this and any other. So thank you again for bringing this matter. I look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to thank the two lead sponsors for this very important piece of legislation, this ordinance, and thank the Chair as well for his diligent work. Very simply put, this is about healthcare. This is about equality. This is about Boston once again leading the way. And I'll be proud to support this vote in favor of it, and look forward to seeing its implementation very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. I'd like to thank Counselor Presley and Counselor Wu myself for ushering this through on behalf of the city council, and for Counselor Flaherty for his chairman's on behalf of the City Council, and for Counselor Flaherty for his chairmanship. At this time, Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0716. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Docket number 0716. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Pressley. Counselor Pressley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zake. Counselor Zake, yes. We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a unanimous vote, and that matter, docket 0716, has passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0633 through 0635.
Docket 0633, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2015. Docket number 0634, message and order for the annual appropriation for the school department for FY 2015. And docket number 0635, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B.
Counselor Siomo, the Chair of Ways and Means, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In accordance with Chapter 190, Section 15 of the Acts of 1982, the council must take action on these operating budget dockets today. To date, the Committee on Ways and Means has held 26 FY 15 departmental hearings, amounting to over 60 hours. Let me thank all of you. There's been a great level of participation and input from everyone in this chamber. Later in the meeting, I will be filing an order to reserve the right to hold additional hearings, to take action on the preliminary operating budget, and when a revised budget is submitted to the council. So, at this point, I recommend the council reject dockets number 0633, 0634, and 0635. Thank you. So, a yes vote.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Did you hit your button? I would repeat that. Did you want to say anything else, Counselor Murphy? Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report on docket 0633 be rejected without prejudice. Madam, would you, Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
And a yes means you will reject without prejudice. Counsel Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Pressley. Counselor Pressley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zake. Counselor Zake, yes. We have a unanimous vote on docket number 0633.
Docket number 0633 has been rejected without prejudice unanimously. Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and that docket 0634 be rejected without prejudice. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Docket 0634. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Pressley. Counselor Pressley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zake. Counselor Zake, yes. We have a unanimous vote on docket number 0634 to reject without prejudice.
Docket 0634 has been rejected without prejudice unanimously. Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report on docket 0635, that it be rejected without prejudice. All in, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Docket number 0635. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Pressley. Counselor Pressley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zake. Counselor Zake, yes. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 0635 to reject without prejudice.
Docket 0635 has been rejected without prejudice unanimously. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1021, Counselor Zake offered the following order for hearing regarding MBTA janitorial staffing cuts.
Chair recognizes Counselor Zake on docket 1021.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, come to my attention that the MBTA has approved a plan for its janitorial contractors to cut the janitorial staff up to one-third. This would obviously have an impact, not only on the janitorial staff, many of whom are residents of the City of Boston and our constituents, but also on the provisions of services through the T. I often, you know, use the T getting around the district. I know many of us do, many of our staffs, many employees of the City of Boston use the MBTA's transit service to get to and from. That's what it's for. And these cuts would potentially reduce by almost 80% the number of janitorial work hours during peak times. You know, I think we're often talking about how Boston needs to continue, you know, to continue to be a world-class city, and having world-class transportation is an important part of that. You know, the Chair of the Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure, Planning and Investment, making sure that we have an integrated transit system, multimodal, that's top-notch is very important, I think, to me, and I think to the City of Boston's economic development and our future, not only from the perspective of the cuts to the janitorial staff, many of whom will be in dire straits without these jobs, but also the impact this is going to have on the tens of thousands of Bostonians who use the T to get to and from work every day. Certainly have grave concerns about any cuts to services at this time, and I certainly look forward to inviting folks from the MBTA, the State Transportation Department, the contractors, and the SEIU members who are affected, who are potentially affected by these cuts to come and talk about this, and see if we can find other solutions and what role the City of Boston can play in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Zake. Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and thank Counselor Zake for that. I don't use the T. I try not to, but most of these, most of these cuts will be in my district along the red line. I have to battle with the T to get anything done from them. This will come right at the heart of my district, and I just want to thank you for this here, and I will, I'd like to sign on and will be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Pressley.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the Maker and ask to have my name added. Our custodial staff, whether you're talking about our Boston Public Schools, the MBTA, our office buildings, are an invisible workforce. So, I thank you for bringing this to the fore on behalf of those custodians who provide an incredible service, also recognizing the impact on their families and in turn, our economy, but also just speaking to the impact it would have on riders. And so, again, I rise to commend the Maker and ask to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Pressley. Add Counselor Pressley's name, Counselor Baker's name, Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Siomo's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please add the Chair's name. At this time, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Counselor Zake for bringing this to the floor. I met with the janitors who are looking to have their jobs cut, and as Counselor Zake stated, we're a world-class city, and we've pushed, and Mayor Walsh has pushed hard to have the MBTA have late-night service. And I follow Josh on Twitter, and he often tweets about the increase in rise of significant numbers riding the trains late at night. These cuts would be incredibly awful, not only for the families who are getting cut, but for the services in the stations. What they go through, the stories that I've heard from the janitor staff, what they deal with in the bathrooms in those stations are really unbearable. I look forward to working with Josh on this. I look forward to having my name on this. I would even go as far as having some OSHA brought in, and they're not being supplied with gloves. There's a lot of other issues that we can peel this onion apart, and I look forward to it. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too rise to commend a colleague from District 8. Boston is a world-class city, and the quality of life does require clean public transportation services and facilities. I think it's ironic, Mr. President, that they're proposing these cuts at a time when the T is actually increasing its fares for the riders in the greater Boston area. So, I stand with Counselor Zake, and ask that my name be added, and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too want to compliment Counselor Zake on this. The worst of government is when we raise prices and actually give less service, rather than at least try to maintain service. As T prices go up, I think it's critical that we look to have cleanliness and the T being well-kept. In addition, mass transit is based on city centers like Boston. People in the City of Boston using the T are the biggest economic driver for the T, so we should definitely receive a good, clean service. And these folks are doing very, very hard work, work that does not get acknowledged. But we definitely will see a difference if their work is cut. So, I think it's absolutely critical that we bring attention to this issue. Please sign my name.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name, Counselor Yancey's name, and Counselor McCarthy's name. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we talk about diminishing state aid, the actual amount of state aid hasn't diminished. It's increased, but state assessments have also increased, so the net is a reduction over the course of the last few years. And why I say state assessments is because Boston pays, and the last time I was in excess of $100 million towards running the MBTA, towards funding the MBTA, out-of-city government coffers. Not only are their passengers paying on a daily basis, but tax dollars that could be diverted here to other uses are going to fund the T. And a lot of people think about what's wrong in government, and they'll say to us, if they're in a particularly surly mood, "You can't even keep the T running on time." And I'm saying, "I'm a city councilor. I don't have anything to do with running." But that's not in the public's mind. So, congratulations to Counselor Zake for catching that and for us to hold a hearing. You know, it's bad enough that things are bad, but we don't need to be blamed for every level of government. We only need to worry about ourselves. And I think we and our mayor are doing a pretty good job compared to Washington and the state and other governmental agencies. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Docket... Oh, yeah, please. And add Counselor Murphy's name. Docket 1021 will be assigned to the Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure, Planning and Investment. Madam Clerk, 1022.
Docket number 1022, I would like to point out that it is supposed to be entrepreneur, not entrepreneurship. Counselor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss an entrepreneur-in-residence program in the City of Boston.
Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Alexander Graham Bell's phone, King C. Gillette's disposable razors, Thomas Edison's electric voting machine, John Gosha, Jeff Avalon, Morgan Newman's idea paint, which is one of our most recent inventions, right here in the great City of Boston. We have had innovative people walk through the streets and lead economic revolutions. Eli Whitney, Elias Howe, who actually created the electric sewing machine. What we haven't done effectively has been to invite them into government, to invite them to bring their innovation, their new ideas, their awesome, different ways of thinking into government. And so, many cities throughout the nation, including San Francisco, Los Angeles, Portland, New York, and other cities have adopted an entrepreneur-in-residence program. We have an opportunity to do that right here in the City of Boston, to bring these innovative people into the walls, not so beautiful walls, but the walls of city government, and actually really connect with them and have many of them connect with us and to revolutionize the way in which we do things here in the City of Boston. We have this opportunity. We have the people. All we need is the will, and I believe in the Walsh administration that we have the will with someone who's actually been willing to think differently and think outside of the box. So, I'm really excited about having a hearing. I think this would be cool. I also think it would actually really help the city's bottom line and the way in which we go about doing things. So, I look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to thank my good friend and colleague from District 7, Counselor Jackson, on this initiative, ask that my name be added. You know, when we talk about the innovation economy, we think about ways that things are changing and ways that the world really is getting smaller. We have some friends today visiting from Russia who are coming over to spend some time with us and to study a delegation. We welcome you, and we talk about how we can share best practices, and so much of innovation is part of it. And what intrigues me about this idea is the way that we can use new technology to better do our jobs. I mean, my God, did we think 10 years ago you'd be able to take a picture of a pothole with your phone, upload it to the Citizens Connect app, and a DPW crew would get the same picture themselves and be able to address it instantly? It's an exciting initiative to figure out we can work better, not only to help grow the innovation economy, but also just to deal with the basic quality of life, important city services that we talk about each and every day. So, I thank the author. I look forward to a hearing and figuring out ways we can work better together, engage these entrepreneurs, and really work to make sure that this city continues to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Please add Counselor O'Malley's name. Counselor Pressley's, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zake, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, and please add the Chair's name. Docket 022, 1022, is assigned to the Special Committee on Small Business, Entrepreneur, and Innovation. And I'd like to welcome the Open World Exchange Program delegation from Russia. They're here with us today. Thank you for visiting our historic city and this lively and historic chamber. Madam Clerk, 1023.
Docket number 1023, Counselor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss entrepreneurship education programs for K to 12 students of the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson on docket 1023.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This past weekend, I got to attend Build Boston's show of young people, actually it was a contest, where they got to do a pitch to win about $2,500. You would be amazed, Mr. Chair, at the swagger that a young person has when they say they're 14-years-old and they are CEO, or COO, or CFO of a company. This program is a four-year program that begins with ninth graders and follows through to young people going into college. We have another program called the Youth Cities Program, where it's another program We have another program called the Youth Cities Program, where it's another program where they have a March Through May Boot Camp, where they actually are over at, and these are eight-to-18-year-olds, where they go to Microsoft New England Regional Development Center, Microsoft Nerd, and they learn how to start a business, what a performer looks like, what cost of goods sold looks like. And we should be doing this and implementing this in all of our schools. We have young people who come to us every single year who push for more youth jobs. Well, how about more youth businesses, where they can actually create jobs for themselves as well as their classmates? We have an opportunity to explore this and to look at how entrepreneurship education can be used in our K-12 schools as well as after-school programs. And I look forward to exploring this. And again, this is something that's already happening. The objective is to expand and make sure that we're coordinating these programs and making sure that all young people who are interested know about this. We have amazing and bright talent. They are not only our future city councilors, but they're also our future business owners. So I look forward to also an expedited hearing on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Zakeham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to commend Counselor Jackson on this order. I think it's so important, as you know, the two of us have talked in the past, and I think I've talked to him many times along the campaign trail since coming into office, about the importance of entrepreneurship to our city's economy. At a time where we're talking about, you know, high unemployment rates, lower wages, rising costs, we need to make sure we're tapping every resource. And I think the creative minds, the energy of our students in the Boston Public Schools are one of those untapped resources, especially when it comes to creating new businesses, generating jobs, generating revenue for the city, for families, for people across Boston. I think this is a very timely and important order, and I'd please add my name to it.
Thank you, Counselor Zakeham. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Zakeham's name to the matter. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much. I rise to commend Counselor Jackson on this initiative. I was inspired to stand up when he mentioned future city councilors, because back in 1964, I was elected president of my junior achievement company, which obviously is an entrepreneurship program. So I commend him, and I believe we should be encouraging this type of experience for all of our young people, so they can learn about management, marketing, as well as money. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. 1964. That's...
Still a young man, that's right.
Please add Counselor Yancey's name, Counselor Wu's name, Counselor Presley's name, Counselor O'Malley's, Counselor Murphy's, Counselor Lamatina's, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Baker, and please add the chair's name to that matter. Docket 1023 is assigned to the Committee on Education. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1024, Counsel Linahan for Counsel Flaherty.
Flaherty moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1024 has passed.
Docket number 1025, Counsel Linahan...
Counselor Flaherty moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1025. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1025 has passed.
Docket number 1026, Counsel Linahan...
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1026. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1026 has passed.
Docket number 1027, Counsel Linahan...
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1027. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1027 has passed. I've been informed by the clerk... Hello? Lost a piece of paper, yeah? That there are six late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
Counsel... Bill Linahan for Counselor Murphy ordered that effective Saturday? No.
Oh, it's a person... Are you going to read that one first? Those first?
I...
Okay, okay. Okay, that's fine. Could you read that one more time, Madam Clerk? I'm just...
Absolutely. Thank you. Counsel... Bill Linahan for Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy moves the first late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter is passed.
Counsel Bill Linahan for Counsel Siomo ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has passed.
Counsel Bill Linahan for Counsel Siomo ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has passed.
Counsel Bill Linahan for Counsel Siomo ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fourth late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the fourth late-file matter has passed.
Counsel Bill Linahan for Counselor Murphy ordered that effective Saturday...
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the fifth late-file matter has passed.
Order of Counselor Mark Siomo, June 11, 2014, ordered that the council continues to hold hearings to gather information on the FY15 budget filed in the city council, June 11, 2014.
Chairman of Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, in advance of me speaking on this matter, I'd like to thank the support our committee has received from my own staff, especially Chief of Staff Mark Hanley, but also central staff, Daisy, Kate, Cora, Michael, Christine, Lorraine, Ron, and Juan, and our behind-the-scenes man, Kerry Jordan, as well as our newest employee, Addison, for all their work to make our hearing so successful. As I mentioned earlier, when we rejected without prejudice the operating budget, I'm filing a new hearing order to reserve the right to hold hearings on the operating budget before the administration submits the budget next week. Thank you.
That sixth late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Ways and Means. For the order to be... So I need... Recession, one second. Passage of the sixth late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the sixth late-file matter has passed. Counselor Murphy? We still have green sheets? Can... Thank you. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time? Hearing no takers, then...
Counsel...
Oh, huh? You're a little late in the button there, buddy. All right. Counselor Lamatina. Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, please pull from, is page 2 of 22, docket number 0515. Can you please read, pull the committee? We need a second reading.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll read it. In the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, docket number 0515, sponsored by the mayor, message and order that on November 7, 2013, the Public Improvements Commission, known as PIC, reviewed a joint petition by Mr. Joseph Stefano Jr. and the City of Boston's Park and Recreation Department to abandon all rights of public travel on certain portions of Swift Street, a private way in East Boston, as shown on a plan marked "City of Boston." And now I will pull the committee.
Please, Madam Clerk, hold the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor.
Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. And Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. We have unanimous consent.
The matter is on the floor. Counselor Lamatina moves that docket 0512 will have its second reading. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Docket number 0515, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linahan.
Yes.
Counsel Linahan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancey.
Yes.
Counsel Yancey, yes. Counsel Zakeham. Counsel Zakeham. Mr. President, on docket number 0515, we have the unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a quick recess. And therefore, for this matter to be read a second time, it needs to be one week in between the first and the second reading. So this matter would be available for a second reading on the 18th of June. So no action will be taken at this time. Clear? Okay. Thank you. So there are no matters from the green sheets. Counselor Murphy, you now have the floor. And... I...
Thank you, Mr. ...
Old presidents die hard, I'm telling you.
I just want to point out something that I hope is lighthearted. It certainly is for me that I want to inform everybody that eight years ago, this Friday the 13th, Friday the 13th, an appropriate day, eight years ago, Friday the 13th, our colleague, Lanslide Lamatina, won a special election in Charlestown, East Boston, and the North End, District 1, by 190 votes. And he has been a joy to serve with... I speak for all of us. He has been a joy to serve with in those eight ensuing years. Just an acknowledgement. Congratulations, my friend, Counsel Lamatina.
For the record, 192 votes, Counsel. Thank you for that, Counsel Murphy. There is, let me see, one matter for the consent agenda, late-file matter, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, that matter is so added. So the chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask, I don't see any lights, great, I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo and Counselor Murphy, Mary V. Boyl. For Counselor Lamatina, Angelo Pagluca. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves, when the council adjourns today, it so does in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and it is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, June 18, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you.[1692.43]